Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, July 21st at now 6:36. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second motion by Mr. Vignani, second by Ms. Connolly. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will go to the report of the town administrator in a minute, but before we do, I just want to remind everyone that we are working under Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency and that this is a live cable broadcast of our meeting and that you can participate by dialing in the following numbers, and they are 425-436-6308, You'll be put in the waiting area. Oh, and you'll need an access code of 817-651, and you do the pound sign. You'll be put in the waiting area, and when we ask for public comment, you'll be able to access the meeting. Having said that, before I turn it over to Mr. Bedrow, I just wanted to let people know that last Tuesday night, the board had a special meeting to discuss fiscal year '21 and the challenges facing the board with both the COVID impact and the budget impact and other things. And we wanted to make sure that we didn't lose sight of some other issues that are affecting the town. So there were four things that we said that near term, we really wanted to put as a priority, and they were exploring potential uses of the B-Wing at the Old Gate School, advancing conversation about regional sewer expansion, mostly to benefit the North Situate area, continuing our commitment to work on water quality and quantity, and working closely with the school committee, because obviously that is going to be an extreme challenge for the whole community in the coming months. And the final thing was to launch a town-wide diversity inclusion effort. And I'm really happy to report that in the week since that meeting, there has been ready activity on all of those fronts that we'll hopefully be able to report soon, and I think Ms. Curran will be discussing the last diversity and inclusion effort in New Business today. So having reported that, I'd like to turn it over to the town administrator for his report.
Thank you. First of all, the COVID update, as I reported yesterday morning, we had two new cases over the week. One of those was an out-of-town travel person who came back to town, a Situate resident traveled to Hotspur and came back. No cases yesterday, no cases today. So again, we're hoping we're trending in the right direction. We're about two weeks off from the Fourth of July. This is when we would expect to see a spike. So far, so good, but people need to keep doing what they're doing, social distancing, hand washing, and wearing masks. I want to congratulate Deputy Chief Al Elliott. Al reached out to me over the weekend with the weather forecast and suggested we open the cooling center down at the community building on Jericho Road. He was able to put that whole thing together in less than 24 hours. Not real busy, but we did have eight people in there over the weekend, three on Sunday and five on Monday, to get out of the heat. So congratulations to Al, good work in getting it up and running. A couple of projects that we want to update some people on, we got updates today. The gas company finally showed up after months for the Bailey's Causeway and Gilson Road culverts. Those jobs will start most likely next week. The Bailey Causeway neighborhood has already been notified. We've sent a mailing out to them. We will be selling and mailing out to the Gilson Causeway, Gilson Road people. Those are replacement of those culverts that have been, I think, years in the making. You guys have been talking about them. We'd hope to delay them a little bit more. The gas company is concerned about delaying them because of the gas service they have to provide. They're delaying them much farther. They're afraid it's going to get into the cooling season, and they won't be able to, or the heating season. So will be some disruption, particularly down at Bailey's Causeway, but we will have signs up. And again, the mailing has been done to the residents down there. We'll let people know that there's going to be some detours. And Glades Road will be a two-way again, so people can get it out of there. But that'll take about three to four weeks to get those projects done. The second one is the Musquashka berm. People should expect to see some activity down there starting next week, some bulldozers and some equipment preparing the berm, so they can get the trucks up on it. That'll start next week, and after that, they will see trucks starting to go in there and deliver that stone. And that's a couple-month project. It's a lot of trucks. We will make sure. We had a pre-construction meeting today. The trucks will not be stacking on surf side. They'll get in, drop off, and be out before the next truck comes. So we'll make sure there's no stacking up on surf side. A couple more things, we just want to remind people about the water ban. The week before we put the water ban in, we averaged 2.21 million gallons per day. Last week, we averaged 1.82 million gallons a day. So we are saving about 400,000 gallons on average a day with the water ban. We asked you to conserve if you're using your sprinklers, if you're using your irrigation systems. We will be out. We will find you at this point. With the hot weather we've had, it becomes pretty simple to see who's watering their lawn and who's not. The green ones are being lawned and the brown ones aren't. So we are out and about and making sure that we have people adhering to the ban. Kevin, you know how much the reservoir, what the reservoir level is right now?
Pretty high.
We still have water. You know, we're not in desperate need of water, but we're hoping to use whatever we have left for flushing and cleaning in the fall. So I don't have the exact number.
We're still in good shape, but we want to conserve that water. We don't want to use it and put ourselves in a bad situation. Speaking of brown water, this is brown water time of year where you want to remind people if you have brown water, if you have discolored water, please report it. Don't post it on Facebook. That doesn't tell us where you live or what's going on. Put it to the brown water line or the email. We had about 12 or 15 complaints this past weekend. Probably about half of those were associated with the flushing we did up at Wheeler Park, which caused some discoloration. The complaints we're getting, for the most part, are discolored water, kind of a tea color or darker, not what we saw last year where the water was the color on my phone, so that's good. One of the issues we have, we really can't do a full flush at this time because we don't want to use the water. So we are kind of trickling some water in the pipes and trying to clean them out. But let us know. We can send someone out. We can investigate what's happening at your house and maybe help you fix it. And again, they're data points, so please let us know. 715-458735, or brownwater@situateMA.gov. One other update, two more things. The governor has signed a new bill allowing for the on-premise licensee to sell mixed drinks for off-premise consumption. So you'll be able to now take a mixed drink when you leave a bar or a restaurant. There are some strict guidelines for it, that it has to be sealed. If you're driving in a car, it's supposed to be in your trunk. I think it may be helpful to the businesses. I think from an enforcement standpoint, it could be problematic, but that is a change that they signed into law, and we've notified all the restaurant license holders today. Lorraine sent them all out the copy of what the regulations ask. We'll have to keep an eye on that. And finally, as I've been telling people, this is about the last week or so we can see the NeoWise comment. Look for the Big Dipper. It's below it to the right. If you miss it, it'll be back in 6,800 years and you'll be able to see it again.
Thank you, Jim, for that public service announcement and for all of that update. Does anyone have anything for the town administrator? It's shaking. Tony?
Just a few quick things. If we could just make sure everyone understands that the berm repair is due to the storm damage. I don't remember the name of the storm, and it's been...
Couple different storms.
75% paid by FEMA.
Yep.
And then the other thing, what are we doing about people that own wells? We still don't want them to adhere to the nine-to-five watering?
Well, you should adhere to the nine-to-five watering anyways because watering your lawn at 2:00 in the afternoon is a waste of water. So you should be watering early in the morning or later in the afternoon, just for the...
So some people, they comment that they see sprinklers on it. Could be a private well.
They're supposed to have a sign.
Yep.
And we're supposed to, those wells are supposed to be registered with the Board of Health. We do occasionally test the water. We test for fluoride, I think.
If it's our water, but I don't think we can stop somebody from using a private well.
Right, but we can, if you tell me it's a private well, they test if it has fluoride in it, it's ours. It's not a private well. No one fluorizes. Fluoride is their private well. So we do check on those sometimes. But if they're using their private wells, it's supposed to be assigned. We will check with the Board of Health to make sure that they do have a private well. But they should still adhere to the guidelines of window water.
Great. Thanks.
Just a question. When the Bailey's Causeway culvert work begins, I know this, I saw the signs today. There's been great public notice. That, going back to two-way, it's already crazy because people don't remember that it's one-way in this. So I would suggest that maybe the first day or two, you might want to ask the safety officers to keep an eye on that because...
We've already, I know Kevin's already spoken, and they've already had a meeting on that, so they'll keep an eye on that for the first.
Okay.
And there'll be details all over the place, too.
And not that I care that much, but is there dust control under the surf side berm?
Kevin, you know?
What are they going to do? I imagine when they dump all those rocks, it's...
As much as possible. I mean, you can't really put a lot of trucks up there. I mean, we'll look with the contractor and maybe something for a pump.
If it becomes a problem, we might have to, because it's pretty close to homes where they're dumping that, some homes.
We'll have somebody up there monitoring the water.
Yes, ma'am. Jim, how are we doing down at Co. Green?
He has until the end of August to become in compliance.
Okay.
He has to give me reports every two weeks. I think he's due with a report this week. It is slow, but he is removing stuff, just not as quickly as we would like. But the deal he has, someone's taking it for free and not charging him, so it's kind of hard for him to say, you know, you just show up every day and take it.
Yeah.
But the deal is, he has till the end of August to be in compliance.
It looks almost insurmountable, but I wish him...
He's got a long way to go.
I wish him the best. Thank you.
Quick question. COVID-related question. Are there any restrictions on door-to-door salesmen who are coming from out of town? A few folks contact, saying, why are these folks coming in from out of town? Are there restrictions? Or I have no, I don't know.
I don't know of any restrictions in any of the guidance that we've received. I don't know why anybody would want to go door-to-door or have someone... I had someone come to my house about, you know, he was selling Ant Killer or something. I'm like, get off my lawn, go away. But there's nothing that I know of in the guidelines that say you can't go door-to-door, and I don't think we have actually any bylaw about door-to-door solicitation either.
Curious. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Curran? Yeah, just to build on Andrew's theme of COVID, do we have any idea how many of our residents have been tested? Do we get that kind of data?
I believe that is on the state website, we get that. So he would have that. What you don't know is how many people were tested more than once.
Okay.
So you get number tested, number positive, and we get a percentage as to what the town of Situate is for percentage positive versus number tested. But you don't know in the number tested, you know, in the nursing homes, they're testing two, three times they're testing people. So you don't know how many people were tested multiple times.
Okay. Thank you. Just curious. I'll go look at it. Any other questions for Jim? Great. We'll move on to our 6:40 scheduled item. I'm going to ask anyone that doesn't have to be in the room to leave so that we can bring some other folks in and maintain, sorry? Someone has a phone on up there. Maintain safe distancing protocol.
I can only have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 people present.
We're going to do this in two parts because we can't get all of the people that really we would love to have in the room to honor today. This is the fun part of Board of Selectmen meetings. It's not contracts and other things. This is where we get to recognize and thank some extraordinary people, both in our community and in our departments, who have gone above and beyond. So I think the best thing is if I could ask our harbor master, Mr. Moan, to, you want to outline what happened, and then we'll...
Sure. So on Friday night on July 3rd, I had just left the office about 10 minutes before I was actually headed out, and they got a call from lifeguards. And you could tell by the sound of the voice that there was something really going on. John and Rich Kelly immediately went down on boats. Rich was in charge that evening. They got underway. My staff in the harbor master office were keeping the communications going. They called me, they called my peers. These guys went out in horrific seas, leaving the entrance of the harbor, the boats was standing right out. They made their way safely down to Egypt Beach. They put their eyes on everybody that was in the water, and this whole time, they're communicating back and forth with our office. At that point, the MV1 started to make their way out of the harbor. John and Rich together went in close enough to the swimmers where the lifeguard had corralled them together all on one board, so it made it really easy for John, for Rich to pull alongside John, just to pluck them out of the water. They worked together. They did an amazing job. They turned the boat, and they came back out, and they were breaking waves. And as they came up like this, he was telling me that there was automatic shutdowns on the engines if the oil, if the boat runs out of oil. Well, the boat was up like this, and the motor's not supposed to be like that. So both engines shut down, boat came back over, Rich was able to light them back off and get safely into the harbor. The whole time, they were communicating again with the office to make sure that the fire rescue was at Jericho Boat Ground. I couldn't be more proud of these guys. This same boat crew was working on the June 13th, so Saturday night, and Jim Polk was also a part of the boat crew. Rich was working the desk that night. John Hathley and Jim Polk actually pulled eight people off a burning boat and a German shepherd. So that was 12 people and a dog in 30 days.
Oh, my God. That's amazing. So let me just step back a little bit. The reason that the harbor master was alerted was because there were three surfers that were off of Egypt Beach, and they got caught in a rip tide. And we're going to next bring in the lifeguards, who through their quick action, were able to get out to those people and get them stabilized so that these guys can do their extraordinary job. It was unbelievable coordination.
Between the two departments, they did, if they had had to circle around to try to grab one kid here or one kid over there, it may not have gone as well. But the lifeguard, quick thinking, got everybody into his board. I think the board was still being dragged out. But he was in, and John's a big guy, he's an ironworker, and he ripped those guys out of the water like they were...
So we have Rich Kelly and we have John Hathley here. They also worked with Sergeant Brian McLaughlin, Officer Natalie Quinn, Officer James Donovan, and Officer Brad Stenbeck from the public safety side of our town. And we are so grateful for your service and thankful that you were able to execute so well to save these kids. Would anyone like to add something to?
Rich actually worked for the town for years. He's a retired paramedic for the town of Situate. He's still a paramedic at a social hospital, and John Hathley's an EMT. And those are the types of people I try to hire. Their skill set is above and beyond what, you know, a lot of the different harbors have.
John.
They're great boat operators, and they're great heroes.
Great, thanks. Mara?
Well, I just want to say thank you. You know, I know everyone shares the same sentiment, and I know how scary it can be out there with big waves, so I appreciate it, and did hear about that fire as well. But thanks so much for working so well with the lifeguards, and we're so fortunate, as Karen said, to have you. So please know you are cherished and valued by us all, so thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Karen?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, having grown up on Egypt Beach, it's very rocky out there. It's very dangerous. The hazards are enormous. So I really appreciate the difficulty of what you did.
Karen?
I can just add, you know, thank you. You know, everyone sees the beach, and they think about the wonderful sunny, prom days, and they don't realize necessarily how they can turn on it. And you need a special skill set to be able to do that and fight that, and not only internally, but just knowledge of the ocean. And you guys have it. You save lives, right? You put your lives in danger, and you save lives. So we're proud of you and thank you for doing it.
Let me just, as a dad, you know, I've got, you know, my 90-year-old has been out there on Egypt, you know, trying to surf at least, and just to hear what you were able to do, I can't tell you how comforting it is to know that we have folks like you out there protecting us. So yeah, definitely thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. You guys make sure you get a selfie together so that... Yeah, I'm sorry that we have to do this.
We're taking pictures out of the water.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve, for coming in.
For those who are watching on TV, we're trying to figure out how to get the hero lifeguards in here without breaking our safe distancing rules. Woo!
I hope your families are watching on TV.
We should take a picture.
I know. We're totally getting, wait a minute, I'm taking a picture right now. I can take a picture. You taking one? We have other stuff to do, but this is the most fun and important stuff. All right. We can tell you're smiling. Smiling eyes. All right, so with masks, everything, so Sheila Dunn, okay, and Jack O'Connell, no you, Eliza, I'm guessing is you, and the hero Craig, no, is it Carlino?
Yes.
Carlino. So these four young people were, I'm going to cry, were on the beach and saw, let's see, I'm going to get this right. So Eliza saw the surfers in distress, and they had started on the surfboard, and they were caught in a rip current. She immediately notified that there was a problem. Craig grabbed his, you can describe it in a minute, but he grabbed his board and raced out, and Luke and Sheila immediately went into the protocol to make sure people got out of the water, that it was safe. Is that a good summation of what happened? Okay, now I want to hear the good stuff. So tell me, Craig, how it was for you?
Well, I wasn't the one who first noticed, but Eliza, I think, noticed the kids who were surfing. At first, they were way out of our zone. They slowly drifted into our zone, and then all of a sudden, they started waving us down and yelling. And we immediately knew that something was wrong, so I just happened to be the one to grab the board and get in. And as soon as I got there, they were pretty calm, and they just told me that they couldn't get back in. So we tried so many parallels to shore, but I guess we were in some kind of current, and that just didn't work. So we couldn't swim anywhere. We just passed up where we were, and then we got picked up by the harbor master.
We couldn't be prouder of you all, and thank you for coming in. I'm sure you're going to get a couple of pictures taken, but the Board of Selectmen, I know everybody wants to say something, and then our clerk has a special proclamation she'd like to read. So I'll start with Mr. Goodrich. Would you like to add comments?
No, again, hearing the story, I mean, we're, again, so thankful for, I mean, what you did and how quick for your reaction. And yeah, I've got three little boys, all under the age of 10, so knowing that you guys are out there, keep, you know, keeping us safe is so, it's just, it's wonderful. So again, thank you so much.
Mara?
Sure. Guys, thanks so much. I go to Egypt, you know, most weekends, and I think my biggest, you know, heart palpitation is just watching the kids out there on the boogie boards and surfboards, and I can't imagine how you all feel. And all we heard was the lightning speed at which you palled out there to get to them. So your colleagues really respect you and are grateful for the athleticism that you displayed to get out there in time to save them. So know that, and, you know, thank you to each of you for doing what you do, especially during these times with masks. I know it hasn't been easy for you, so awesome job. You know, couldn't be prouder.
Mr. Vignani from the back of the room, would you like to add any comments?
Well, I mean, just that, you know, I have kids your age, I've coached you guys over the years, and it's just unbelievable that you have the fortitude and the dedication and ability to help our people out there and do what you do. So we really appreciate it, and to take a special person who's allowed to do that type of stuff, you guys, you guys have it. Thank you very much.
Before we go, Ms. Connolly, I just want to, back in the hallway is our recreation director, Mar Glancy, and her job is to train our lifeguards, and I'm thinking that you're doing a pretty good job there, Ms. Glancy.
I think they retained everything that they select. This is also the assistant director. This is Liz Gorgon.
Hi, Liz.
She's also a teacher in house, so she's all of our guys.
Behind it. Yes, thank you so much for your leadership in making sure that our young people who are doing this job are trained to do their job. So thank you to that. So I will turn it over to Ms. Connolly for her comments.
Well, I guess what I would like to say is, is that as much as we can all appreciate the athleticism that you all have, the ability to concentrate when it'd be easy to kind of drift off is really the most amazing thing to me. So thank you. It's an amazing skill you have, and thank you.
Would you like to read, are you capable, Ms. Clark?
I am. I said I was going to cry. I always cry at stories like this. We have a proclamation, and I'll read it, and then I'll give it to you. Whereas the Board of Selectmen commend Craig Carlino in recognition of his heroic actions on Friday, July 3rd, 2020, at approximately 4:00 PM by rescuing three surfers in distress at Egypt Beach. Whereas the surfers had started out in the surf zone and were swept by the rip current into the swimming zone very far from shore. Craig grabbed the rescue board and started out toward the distressed surfers. Working as a team, the lifeguards on the beach radioed the Situate Harbor Master. The Harbor Master and the Situate Police boats responded to the call. Craig made his way out to the surfers. The surf was extremely rough with four-to-six-foot waves and a strong rip current. The boys were scared, and Craig put them on his rescue board, calmed them down, and kept them safe until the Harbor Mast boat arrived. Whereas Craig Carlino, in line of duty under extraordinary circumstances, acted with demonstrated judgment, knowledge, skill, and self-sacrifice in an act of heroism and exceptional merit in public service despite risk to his personal well-being. His prompt actions and the support of his fellow lifeguard saved three lives, and the town of Situate thanks him for his extraordinary efforts during a time of crisis. His fellow lifeguard stated, "I've guarded for many years, and I've never seen anything like it." Craig was amazing. Therefore, be it resolved that the entire town of Situate and its Board of Selectmen recognize Craig Carlino and proudly, with great appreciation, present to him this Citizenship Award commemorating his remarkable effort in preventing a near tragedy. Signed by the Board of Selectmen, Karen Canfield, Chairman Anthony Vignani, Karen Connolly, Clerk Morris C. Curran, and Andrew Goodrich. Thank you so much.
I'm virtually shaking all of your hands.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
And Karen, you might want to mention personal letters being sent to all of the lifeguards.
Yes, so, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Lorraine. That was the first thing, yes. So you guys, everyone involved in this, the board has written personal notes because, you know, obviously, this was a team effort. He got wet, but you guys, it wouldn't have happened if you guys weren't there helping him. So thank you so much, and we're so proud of you all.
Thank you so much.
And we're even on time, and we didn't cry too much.
I was, I was hanging on there.
Good job. That's...
Very well done.
It's hard.
It was very nice.
The good stuff, and it's, you know, these kids are amazing.
Yeah.
Thanks, parents.
Very touching.
All right. I wish we'd just get past COVID so we could have all the parents in the room next time everything could happen.
I know.
All right. Hi, Frank Snow. We're going to move on to our 7 o'clock item, which is the discussion about Museum Beach. We have Frank Snow, who is the head of our Conservation Commission, and Amy Waki, who is our conservation agent. So we can't bring you up to the table, and we're just going to do it this way. Do you guys want to update us on, we did get the backup material. We've received a lot of emails and calls from residents who, I suspect there's a few online waiting to talk as well, about concern about the conditions of that beach. So which of you, who wants to start?
So if you don't mind, we've had a discussion with the commission. We had a discussion the other night that we also got input from neighbors on this.
It's been an ongoing discussion, Amy, Jim and I had met earlier this spring before the COVID piece, to discuss beach nourishment and plantings and fencing in the area, and then with everything that happened, it kinda fell off to the wayside. So, we would very much like to do more plantings, more restoration, more protection of the beach. Part of that process would include snow fencing, so at that point, we'll have to look at the use of that beach, and how do we deal with that, and then the removal of kayaks, canoes, whatever that's there that is inappropriate for that area. It's been sort of a snowballing effect over a number of years, and it has got the attention of the commission, but, as I said, we just started that up, and then it was one of the things that got pushed off to the side.
Amy, do you wanna add to that?
Well, yeah, I mean, just that this past month, we've received, you know, complaints as a view about increased amount of boats on that beach, and just for several stories on that sensitive dune area, so we really do want those boats out of there as soon as possible, and need to get that message out to people that, you know, it's no longer, you know, a place where we can do that, so that we can go forward with this project.
The other thing, the grass that we plan for that is only available in the spring, so we order it townwards ahead of time, we get plugs, and then hopefully by spring, we're just starting to get some volunteer action going again. We had talked to scouts about various projects, and all of that stuff sort of fell off the wayside, but we're hoping that by springtime, we can get that, so the labor tournament would be, would be volunteer, where we can purchase a good number of grass, so talk about that, how we fund that, as well as maybe DPW has some snow fence, if not, we'll have to acquire that as well.
Yeah, and one thing that we observed last fall was that the boats that were remaining mainly have unknown ownership, you know what I mean, so there was definitely some flops up, some abandoned washed-up vessels that might be considered trash if it's called away, whereas others, I think, actually belong to, you know, folks in the neighborhood or what have you, so.
The other piece is, in some instances, the property's owned by the town, maybe Care Custody Conservation, the Water Department, or the Selectmen, or whatever, I don't believe that's the case with this piece of property, so what the commission would be doing is, we're enforcing our jurisdiction in terms of resource area. And then planting would be something that would be beneficial to the road, to the street, whatever, but it's not quite the same as, say, the town forest or some other pieces, so it's a little bit different in terms of how we view it.
And we also, we would like to get the board out there to educate people about, you know, the benefits of a healthy dune system, and, you know, also where the appropriate watch sites in town are, because there are, you know, some kayak block areas that are not Museum Beach, but, you know, dirtway, we've got Royal Parkway, Maritime Center, possibly Light House, so there are other spots to get your dune in.
Just a couple of questions, I'll open up to the board for some questions. When you mentioned the snow, well, let me first start with, just a recap, is, we've received a lot of stuff, there's always been people that have, you know, that we presume live nearby that have put them there, but it was a few, and I saw one count that it was almost 100 different vessels are there right now. Obviously, that's damaging to any ecosystem. You mentioned the snow fence, is that something that would go up in the fall and then be removed at some point? What's, how does that work?
Typically, we've been waiting till spring, I mean, we could push them up now to keep people off the grass that's existing.
Okay, so the purpose isn't snow, it's for access?
Typically remove it, it's, yeah. It does help with some sand migration, the placement of that helps with sand migration, but it's also really to keep people off of this, and this is not unlike issues we have at the beaches, you know, trying to keep people off the grass, accessing the beach, all that sort of thing, and we usually have some real cooperation with DPW in installing that sort of stuff, you know, they have them in college.
I'll see, my board, you have any questions about this?
Well, if I may?
Yeah.
I'd like to suggest that we get the boats and all the personal property off there as soon as possible, because my feeling is that they're doing damage as we speak, and I don't see why anyone thinks it's okay to literally abandon a piece of your personal property onto public property. So I'm fully in favor of doing this and doing it sooner rather than later, and I feel as though if we give people a couple of weeks' notice, if we put signs up at the beach explaining what we're doing, we put out an email blast, we inform people through the video that we do every week, we have plenty of ways of communicating with people, and I guess one of the reasons why there are so many boats down there is people are staying home, they're not going anywhere. So, two, a couple of weeks from posting signs to asking them to come and get their stuff, I don't think is unreasonable, and I know a lot of people think that's too quick, but my personal opinion is, the sooner the better, so.
I was a bit confused, you were saying that some of the jurisdiction is a little different, that you're, so, I went with my six-year-old last night, and we counted 78, and some of these are boats that have just been, they're obviously have been there for years. So are you saying that's not something that usually DPW would pick up, or you would pick up? I mean, some of these have definitely been there.
We don't believe this is town property.
Some of it is town property, some of it is actually private property, so they would have to put an enforcement order against whoever owns the property.
Do we know which is which?
Yeah, I'd have to go out there and look, but we have an idea, I mean, this is a different type of stuff, yeah, but, yeah.
That's, that's a pretty key issue, though, is, you're, I think what you're saying, Frank, is even with private property, there's conservation issues?
So, let's just say that someone does something on a piece of private property, maybe not the homeowner, but someone else does that, the enforcement order goes against the owner of the property.
Like filling in wetlands.
Right. So let's say their neighbor crossed over onto their property line, but filled in that, so if we issue enforcement order, typically we go to both, but the actual action is on the property, is on the homeowner that owns that, and then they wound up suing the other person who did the damage. So, I don't think this is like, I don't think we need to go that far with that, I think if we, to Karen's point, if we say, listen, we wanna get these out of here, what we probably need to do is create some sort of pathways so people aren't walking across all the marshes, so maybe some of the fencing does need to go up this fall, or this summer, create areas where people can traverse that, and then make the move to get these places out, and you folks have been great in supporting, like, the Resource Person with the County Police Department, so I think we've gotta work with the police, the harbor master, anybody that would have some extra jurisdiction there, and whether we tag them, whatever, you know, put out a blast, put up some signs, and then take the action that we need to take.
One more question, I'm sorry. The, there are access paths through the dunes now? Do you envision that any of those will remain? Will people have, will it be public access to that beach? Because that's obviously a very important asset.
Yeah, we're not looking to close that off, I mean, you know, there's very well-established paths that people can get, you know, to the water and get access to the beach, it's just the storage of the boats on the dunes should not deter us, and we need to go.
Mar?
Well, I mean, there doesn't seem, how damaging is it for those kayaks? It doesn't seem like we have to.
Well, it's not damaging for the kayaks, I mean.
No, no, for the, I'm sorry, for the dunes, for the kayaks to be on there, how damaging? I just don't hear how urgent.
I mean, so you're crushing a living piece of grass, right? I mean, so, the damage, I would say, is temporary, and it's not anything that wouldn't recover, you know, so I think the first step to get the boats off is, you know, they will let nature take its course, and then they will, you know, stand up tall again and thrive, and, you know, but it's a constantly changing environment, which is what an ecosystem is, but, yeah, and just back to the difference on Conservation Commission land, where, you know, like the Driftway Park or properties out in the West End, those are really technically Conservation Commission properties, where, you know, we have an active management oversight, whereas this beach, actually, it's not a town listed beach, it's really just kind of, I would say it's more of a neighborhood beach that, you know, people are drawn to because of its lovely location, and so, it's popular, you know, and with people staying home so much now, you know, paddle boarding is popular, we just had a real increase in the amount of boats, particularly this year, so I think that's why the complaints are up, but, yeah, I mean, in most other locations in town, the boats are, they go down, are used, people bring them down to your home, so.
Did, Mara?
Oh. So, to me, it sounds like we have two issues, you know, we have to identify which segments are private, and alert them in the proper manner, and then which segments are public, and create those pathways, you know, that we're talking about, put up the fencing, and tell the people to get their boats off of there. I don't get to leave my boat down at the Driftway, or my paddleboard down there, not that I would, but I think they're definitely taking advantage of that neighborhood proximity, which, that's a nice privilege to have, but if it is ruining the natural resource, then we need to take care of at least the public piece of it first, with proper notification, and then, because I thought, my big question was, when can you plant seagrass, you know, can you do it in the fall, but you said the spring, so we've already missed that window. But.
Yeah, we buy those in, like, plugs, and then they go, and just, it crossed my mind as we're talking, rather than fencing for this year, we'll deal with this like we deal with pluggers, and we just put up posts, you know, so we don't need to get as fussy as, maybe we'll want some of the fencing in the spring if we do the planting in the grass, but we'd just like to deal with the pluggers, stay in role as a starter.
And then, Madam Chair, just have a question for Jim. Jim, you know, where does the enforcement of the public land lie, and, you know, we put the notices out, we say, you gotta remove your boats by, I don't know, August 1st, whatever the day is, if they don't do it, what happens?
So the DPW don't take them.
Take them, and what happens?
We get rid of them.
Where do they go? Okay, I just wanna be really clear, like, we're not picking them up and holding them somewhere, or are we?
Anything left beyond the date that they're told to get them out, then the town would dispose of.
Okay, I just wanna make sure everything that we communicate is crystal clear.
Yeah, well, we, we've had a lot of conversation about this, you know, last couple weeks, but anyways, the word impoundment would be, and actually, Lorraine had a lovely suggestion about stivering them, you know, stivering these kayaks, so they can give them notice by this date, or it would be impounded, you know, but I mean, I don't know if that's really what to go or not, you know, we could probably communicate it in other ways, it's the same, so.
My guess is the good ones will be gone, and all the dogs will be.
We don't have any place to put them, where they can be impounded, if people can come and pick them up.
You do or you don't?
We don't. So if you leave them there, you have a date certain to get them out. If they're not gone, they're gone. And as Frank said, the good ones will all be gone, there'll be a couple of so-so ones that'll probably go home in the backseat of someone at the transfer station, so they're when they show up, and the rest will just be junk.
Mr. Vignani?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like common sense to me, the one thing I will say is that this isn't a, this isn't really a town initiative, this is all the neighbors complaining. You know, they're the ones that are saying, we don't want this out there, and if Andrew counted 78 boats the other day, I mean, that's clearly excessive, so just tell people to move them, they know. I mean, anyone that goes down there, looks at it, and knows that it's not the way it's supposed to be, then do it. And if you wanted to leave them in Pier 44 parking lot, a couple spots for, you know, for a period of time, you could, but I agree with Jim, the ones that are, the ones that you would do that aren't gonna move because they have holes in them or something.
And you just have someone driving by, send a kayak, and throw it on the back of their car.
Let's, put signs up, make sure people have notice, and do it.
I agree, I think we're all in agreement.
And then Frank can do what he has to do, and Conservation can do, I mean, that area's never really been a priority, because it hasn't been his part of some of the others, but it certainly is something that we would like to keep high.
Sure.
So, you guys will do your stuff, your base. It's really a springtime thing, but just planning and whatnot to do, and get ready for that, and place an order for. We could put a rope up in the afternoon, so.
So, before we see if there's anyone on the line, because I suspect there might be, I'm just gonna recap, I think there's two issues that have been clearly identified, we've got public property on, we've got private property on public land that doesn't belong, regardless of the location, just they don't belong there, and the second is that this is environmentally sensitive area that is part of our resilience, coastal resilience, and it needs to be protected to protect the neighborhood, I presume where those kayaks belong. So, I think we need to come up with a plan to work, if Jim and Amy maybe, and Frank can work on logistics of making sure that it's clearly identified what the plan is to people before, before things start getting removed, but in a reasonable timeframe, we can talk about that, and.
We'll have to get some signage and put signage up, but.
Signage, stickers is a good idea, and I like the idea that pullover lines work fine at the spit, people respect that, and, you know, this, I think this isn't exacerbated because of the COVID situation, people are just looking for stuff to do, and why not leave your boat there, because everybody else did, so, I think if people get enough notice, they'll know. I suspect, Michelle, there might be a couple of calls, there's four calls, if anyone has anything before we open it up to the public for questions, give Frank?
Just if the boats or whatever are on private property, the commission would typically first issue some sort of citation or warning, and then if they fail to do that, then we could move to a different.
Right, and as Mara pointed out, we need to definitely define what is, you know, enforceable under the town, and what needs the extra stuff.
But if it's private property, and they wanna leave it on their beach, they can. If it's in a resource area, and they damage in the dune, we can still. Right, so the dune is gonna be one of them, but the rocks on the beach are gonna help, so, we gotta find out who owns the property, and.
Exactly, that'll be two steps.
We already know that, Michelle, and ourselves.
Yeah, we just need to say.
I think this is adding one more step to that piece, the goal is the same.
Right, and I think that it was communicated to me that the private party, the private portion, the people that own it are acknowledging that the public use their property on the end of Jones, you know.
We'll open up the public and see if there are any comments that we would like to, I would ask anybody that comes on.
Q and A session has started.
Anyone on line, please identify your name and your address for the record.
I'm C. Jones, out of The Blue, 124 Front Street, Situate Harbor.
Nancy, we're not ready for you yet, I'm sorry, we're talking about the Museum Beach, you're next.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, we're glad you're waiting, but if you wouldn't mind meeting just a few more minutes, that'd be great.
Sure.
All right, we have one question.
Okay. Could you please identify yourself by name and address? Anyone on the line?
No.
You ran away? Okay, so I think, I think we have a clear plan, I would, anyone listening, or who's on the line who didn't wanna comment, I would just really like to stress that the board seems to be in pretty clear agreement, and that we will take care of the notification and the removal, and that this is not something that neighbor to neighbor needs to communicate, I think that might be a wise thing with 100 boats out there. We will address the situation, and it'll take a little time, so be patient, but we're getting there.
Q and A session is over.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
One more, Ms. Connolly?
Do we need to vote?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need to vote on this?
We don't have vote on here.
We do have vote.
We don't have vote on here.
You amended the agenda to add vote, Karen.
Pardon me?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm looking at the old one. Alrighty, why do I have the old one?
I just wanna be sure that we're clear.
She did print the old one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, that's all right, I've been rightly corrected that we do have, the agenda was amended, and we can take a vote, which I think would be a wise thing to do. Would anyone like to take a crack at a motion?
Do we have one, Lorraine, or?
Well, point of order.
We don't have one, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's hard.
Point of order.
Point of order, yes, Ms. Curran.
Point of order, yes, Ms. Curran.
So, there is a motion in the packet, but it does require a date for the post-signage and removal of the personal property.
I might have wrote it down.
So, is this something that we want to read and is there a date, I don't want to commit to a date that Frank and the DPW collectively can't meet?
You don't have to put that in the motion, you can just...
Right.
Let it move on.
Okay, okay, there we go.
Read it all period of time.
All right.
Just, I guess...
Okay. Motion to approve the renourishment of museum beach as recommended by the Conservation Commission, and the board further directs the DPW to post signage of removal of personal property. Does that make sense?
Second?
Or do we need to add something to that?
I, I was, that's why I'm hesitating, I'm wondering if we should say removal of personal property by the most expedient date possible or something.
Just put a timeframe, say two weeks from this weekend or something.
Well, we have to resolve the conservation issues on private property as well.
Well, we can at least say, "Get it off town."
Town property.
Or get it off conservation land.
Even better.
Well, no.
It's not conservation, it's not conservation land, you can't say...
What's the right word?
Remove from the resource area.
Right, yeah, the water resources area.
We also have a, we also have a general bylaw that they're not allowed on any town beaches.
Right, but what we're trying to figure out is what's the appropriate time in which to, for, I mean, we're going to need stickers and signs and things like that, so we need a little time to do it right.
I would just say September 1st.
I think that's too long.
How about no later than September 1st? That's kind of late, that's a whole month.
I don't think that date's going to go over big, honestly.
No, me neither.
No, so it's August, it's...
I'd say August 15th.
How does the board feel about that amendment?
August 15th.
Ms. Curran, would you like to make a new motion? Retract.
I'll try. Motion to approve the renourishment of museum beach as recommended by the Conservation Commission, and then the board further directs the DPW to post signage regarding the removable, the removal of personal property within town resource areas no later than August 15th.
Moved by Ms. Curran, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Connolly, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Five, one, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, let's get busy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, have a great night.
The next item is, now we will have Nancy Jones come back on, we will be discussing a special event, Out of the Blue Fashion Show, proposed for this Friday from 6:00 to 8:00. Nancy, are you on the line?
I am.
Oh, great, hi, welcome, I know you, you came before us and it looks like it's the same proposal that you originally put forth without any catering, is that correct?
That's correct.
Would you like to add any more details to this?
I was just proposing that there'd be about 40 chairs placed, you know, in the street, probably 20 on each side, and have a runway down the middle, and if 40 is appropriate, that'd be great.
And this has been approved by the Board of Health?
Yeah.
Okay, and will you be roping that site, the site out at all on the street, or just...
Will be, yeah.
Open up to the board, Ms. Curran?
Yes, will there be standing room permitted, or is it just seated?
Well, I guess if, if anybody really wants to come in view, they can stand, hopefully they'll be appropriate, you know, six feet apart.
Yeah, and that's my, that's my question is, you know, how will we, how do you plan to manage that?
That's a good question, I don't know, I, it's just really, it's free, it first comes first, who wants to sit inside on the chairs, and then I don't know about the people who are walking, you know, to the restaurant.
Are you going to have signage up, any signs or anyone that's kind of monitoring it?
Well, there's five employees who will be helping, we certainly could monitor how many people to stand apart.
Yeah, I think if you put a bunch of signs up, people will probably adhere to it.
Maintain social distancing.
People are pretty, people are doing what they're supposed to do.
Okay, Ms. Connolly, any?
Yeah, I guess my impression is, it's sort of like the restaurants, the restaurants don't have to control what people outside their boundaries are doing, so it's kind of similar, isn't it? That if people are walking around the harbor and they stop and they see a fashion show, I don't know that it's different than...
I just don't have a sense of distance between all these chairs and the, the actual square footage of the layout, so it's difficult to understand if these chairs are a foot apart, two feet apart, three feet apart, that's all, I don't, it's so it's different from the restaurants from that aspect, because we usually, they'll map it out.
There was a, there was a...
I thought there was a plan.
There is a plan, but it's like written on the back page, you know, it's a very loosely...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Nancy, how far apart will the chairs be?
Plus or minus...
We're going to put them six feet apart.
Okay.
And the street is about 24 feet wide, so we thought maybe 18 on one side, 18 on another, and then maybe four in front of the music shop, not on the sidewalk, right on the street. And I'm sure people will come together and they probably will be putting their chairs together, you know, like a restaurant, so I'm really not sure how it's going to all work out.
She would have to, she would have to put the seats six feet apart.
And they couldn't move the chairs, right?
Right, if you come with a family member.
I mean, once the chairs are where they are, that's where they're supposed to be.
Well, you could sit with your family.
As we said at Tom meeting, you shouldn't really move them, because, but...
Yeah, I think that's all just like, like you said, Nancy, people are going to listen and adhere to the rules as long as you post the rules, so if you say, "Please don't move the chairs, wear a mask, stay six feet apart," I think the majority of the people are going to follow that. So if you hung that up, like you're going to rope off your area, if you put those signs all over the ropes, you know, I think, I think it'll work fine.
I do too.
Have you spoken to the music store owner, does he have an issue with you kind of using the whole street?
Uh, no, Jerry is on board.
Oh, good.
Any other comments from...
And I've spoken to my other neighbors, the Welsh company, and them too.
Great.
And they're all far too.
I think it'll be great.
Yeah, I was just doing the quick math on the six feet apart, it could, it could definitely...
Did you do the math right?
No, it'll, yeah, you can do it, it should be a great event.
Well, as the board has said, we, you know, we encouraged everyone to come up with creative ideas so that we can try to support you guys in getting through all of this, so Nancy, I give you a lot of credit for thinking outside the box, and I, you answered the questions we had last time and to the satisfaction, satisfaction of the Board of Health, so those are good things. It is noted that you wanted to request a special event fee waiver as well as a special event permit for this event, and I know, I, I think that the board has some comments about that, I, Jim, do you, is it all right, do you think it's premature for me to talk about potentially?
Okay.
No, okay. There has been some concern in the past that we're on a slippery slope, that every time somebody asks for a waiver, we waive it, and Nancy, this is not exactly directed at you, so if you'll just bear with us a minute, that, but in this instance, that what we're trying to do is help a business, and most of the infrastructure's already been covered by DPW to closure of Front Street, there has been conversation with the EDC Commission that they are in support of in special circumstances like this, and Nancy, I apologize, because I was meant to talk to you about this ahead of time, and I'm catching you unawares, but the EDC is, has been supportive of covering these particular fees in exactly like an instance like this, where it's a small business that needs to do whatever they can to get back on their feet, so I wanted to bring that to the board's attention while we consider the waiver, and Nancy, I'm sure we'll have comments on that after hours when I get called to her room, but it is something that the Economic Development Commission has expressed as a way the town might be able to assist small businesses and these sorts of things. So, that was a long way of saying, how do you guys feel about waiving her fee?
Could I, Nancy, are they allowed to do that?
You waive the fee, I'm not really sure.
No, not us, I'm sorry, not you, Nancy, Nancy Holt, I'm sorry, Nancy, our finest director, can EDC pay these fees?
In essence, we're paying ourselves.
Right, yeah.
EDC does do support of the events, sort of things like Heritage Days.
Which they do.
And I respect what they do, it supports someone that is public safety related, so like galleries or porta potties, it's all about public safety, that kind of thing, so if it comes down to it, we'll go there and let them hear us.
Okay.
So, yes?
Yes, you can go to the guard.
Yes, but it is Peter paying Paul.
Just taking the money out of his pocket.
I know, I just think there has to be some integrity in the fee structure, we either have it or we don't have it, and if we're going to have it, you know, there's always been pretty clear guidelines when we waived it, and it was, you know, a community blind event that was big in nature and, you know, you know, we're talking Heritage Days or Halloween or those types of events that we get huge populations out, so I don't care one way or the other, but I just think if we're going to have that fee, we can't, everybody's just going to ask to waive it, so.
Mr. Gubert?
Oh, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I mean, I...
Saw you first.
Phil, I mean, philosophically, I think until we're in phase four, I am fine, I mean, for me, that's kind of like the cutoff, and we may not be, I'm willing to help any and all these businesses any way we can to waive it, and to me, that's when I would say, "Okay, now let's start thinking about it," but there could be a ways off, but it's fine with me to waive it.
Ms. Curran?
Um, that's actually the route that I was going to go down, is that I think, you know, this could be COVID fee waiving, so we don't continue to go down a slippery slope, so I'm in favor of waiving it as well.
Any more to add?
I agree.
I'm not opposed to waiving it, this, people have been asking to waive it well before COVID.
Exactly.
And it's just getting to be part of the application, we should almost put a checkbox that says, "Has to waive fee."
Do you want us to...
So, yeah, so I don't care if we have EDC pay for it or if we waive it.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to bring, it has been a, it has been a concern of the board that it's a slippery slope, but we're in extraordinary times, so I think that's a great recommendation is to, as a policy, just review them until we get out of this mess. So, and are there any, is there anyone waiting to comment in the public online?
Q and A session has started.
Hi, we're here to talk about the Out of the Blue application for a fashion show, you can hit star six to unmute. Okay, we don't hear anybody, I think Ms. Connolly had one more comment?
Yes, I do, I, what I'm thinking...
Q and A session is over.
Is if, if, if this is a COVID-related thing, then I'm assuming we're going to be waiving this fee for anyone who comes before us in a, I mean, I don't know how else to look at it, that until we get into phase four, or whatever it is, that why even make them apply or ask for the waiver? Can't we just say for the time, for, from here until phase four, the Board of Selectmen is waiving special event permit fees?
Well, I don't think every special event permit is going to be a public, to help a business or to, you know, if somebody wants to have a permit for, I don't know, I can't think of something, but, you know...
Special event fees for bike races, for example.
We're not having any of those.
I think we need to, I personally think we need to take it case by case.
Well...
But if we know, we don't have to have this conversation every time, because we all have discussed it already. You don't agree? Ms. Curran?
I don't disagree, but I think the matter at hand is tonight, so if that's another motion that we want to make in two weeks, whatever, but, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion for this particular one then.
Move to approve a special event permit to Nancy Jones, Out of the Blue, for a fashion show on July 24, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, pending receipt of certificate of insurance.
Moved by Ms. Connolly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Five, zero, it passes, may I have a second motion for the special event fee?
Move to waive the special event fee.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Connolly, sorry.
Sorry.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, eyes have it, five, zero. Thank you, Nancy, can't wait to see what it looks like on Friday.
Do you want to give a little plug?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Time and, time and date?
Good luck.
Or maybe weekend?
Well, it's, oh, we will, yeah.
Go ahead.
It's Friday, July, oh, 24, 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
Great, right in front of the store.
Right in front of, front, great.
You're all invited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye now.
Bye-bye. All right, 7:45, agenda item is to discuss and vote DPW contracts, and Mr. Cafferty is here to enlighten us on these.
Thank you, so we have three contracts, I don't have the list in front of me, but the first one that I have here is the heavy equipment, one, let's make sure I do a little bit more...
Yeah, the first one's landfill monitoring?
Okay, so the first one is landfill monitoring, and that is to a company called SCS Field Engineers, who has been handling the, basically the landfill, doing the monitoring since I first came here, they do a good job, they're a company, main companies out of New York, but they go around, they monitor the gas, they monitor the flare, they take samples around different wells, we have wells around them to make sure there's no migration, anything or any leaks that happen, so.
Any questions, Mr. Gubert?
What is the flare? I'm sorry, don't...
So, the landfill generates methane gas, we burn it off out of flare.
Cool, huh?
Learned something new.
Ms. Connolly?
Yeah, I have a question, this seems to just apply to the, the large landfill that we capped many years ago, does anyone monitor the other abandoned slash non-used landfills in the town?
I would confront with Sean what we still do with those landfills, he watches over the landfills as well as the transfer station, there is some monitoring, but I'd have to check with him to confirm.
Good question.
Yeah, because I'd actually like to know if at some point, if any of that land could be usable for deals or something, so, just curious as to how many there are...
I'll ask Sean about it.
How much, how big they are, and at some point, I would think they'd be usable for at least something, so.
We asked before we put the solar ray up, and it was...
A long time.
Yeah, decades and decades.
But some of these others were abandoned 30 years ago, and, you know, I don't know exactly, there's a couple, there's one out in the West End that I know of, there's one down off of Stockbridge Road, so, I'm just curious, thank you.
Any other comments on this particular contract?
Just the price, is that the same, has it always been that, has it gone up 32,000?
It's, it's gone up a little, but, you know, we get a lot of money to the bank because they also do the maintenance to our flare and everything else, so some of it might be, if something goes wrong with the flare, they will, they will actually, they'll repair it and have technicians to work on it.
Light it back up.
And nobody else bid, is that typical for this type of contract?
They sent out an RFP, and that's the only reply, we've been doing it for a long time, and they do flares all around the country.
Any other questions about this? Is there anyone waiting from the public that would like to talk about landfill monitoring?
Round six?
Q and A session has started.
If you'd like to comment on the landfill contract, you can hit star six and participate. And hearing no one, we'll close the Q and A.
Make a motion?
Someone's here to make a motion.
Q and A session is over.
Moves that the Board of Selectmen award the contract to provide post-closure landfill monitoring services at the Cituit landfill to SCS Field Engineers of Taunton, Massachusetts...
monitoring services at the Situate landfill to SCS Field Engineers of Taunton, Massachusetts for an annual cost of $32,400.
Moved by Ms. Curran, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. Any further comment? No questions? Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Five one, pass for the contract. Uh, the next is the, um, engineering for heavy storm equipment.
So this was a bid that we put out every, every couple of years, and it's for doing cleanup down in Humrock during the storm areas, and we got, had a price that was a little better, it was G-lopes. Um, they have pretty much a Humrock cleanup crew, they're the only guys around in town, or not in town, but in the area that can supply equipment that big, um, but basically, it's almost mining equipment, they bring in a couple 980s, and they bring in the heavy trucks in the city to clear that ground, they do a great job. Um, and they were the little bit for most of this work. Uh, Sean hooked this sheet together, and he just showed some of the other contracts that we put out for, um, Thoughtmen, and also for Postel, for other pieces of equipment, we break it all down so that we can use it. We don't think those are over $50,000, so we don't consider a large cost, but we are still putting these little contracts forward, because hopefully we don't have to use them in all of this, this coming season, but we want to have a contract in place, um, and we want to be set up so that we can bring them in if we see a big storm coming, and we're ready for it.
All right. I have some questions, but I'll open up the board first. Anyone have questions about this? Mark?
Uh, Ms. Chair, that was just a question, thanks for explaining that, Kevin, because I was trying to differentiate if these were responses, and some of them only provided equipment and not crews, but it's basically like an à la carte type of-
It is, so if we just needed a 980 down there for a couple days, we'd hire that. But the cleanup crew we put together is a, is a big crew, it's two giant rock trucks, two of the biggest loaders that they have.
Okay.
And it allows them to get out there, um, and do the cleanup.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? That was my main question, the backup made me look, it was sort of like apples to oranges, I couldn't, you know.
Yeah, we-
Some of them looked like they were lower prices, but, yeah.
It's different sized equipment, because, um, obviously, a loader, somebody else out, that might be like a 950 size, is the same that we have with the transfer station, but then the loader, if you bring the 980, it's tires of eight feet to 10 feet higher, they're much, much bigger, and that's what makes up the difference, size-wise.
So when you put out the contract, do you specify what we need?
We specify the equipment size by weight, the bucket size. So for example, we might say a 30,000 pound machine with a five yard bucket, um, and that's required, because we can't say you need to use a cat, somebody might have a Komatsu, or John Deere, or something similar.
Okay.
And that's how we specify the equipment weight sizes.
Uh, my last question is, in this contract, is it incurred as used, or is there any kind of minimum requirement?
Well, in the last one, Humrock cleanup crew, because they have to mobilize so much equipment, they're typically looking for a 16 O minimum, um, and that covers the cost to mobilize everything up.
But there's no like retainer or something, just, okay.
And basically, we use this, I mean, we know when we're gonna have flooding and everything, and we, at this point, we were getting pretty good at it, I hate to say, but we usually call them up before another town, or somebody else calls that equipment out, and we know, so that we can get it up there, and we're ready to go.
Mr. Vignani, did you have something more to add?
No, other than I went out and saw them, I can't remember the storm, these are the biggest pieces of equipment you've ever seen. Like you said, it's an eight foot tire.
By the March 2018 storm.
Yeah, there was, and they have to take it, and then typically, they drive all the way down, and then back down on the beach and dump it, so they're there for a while, usually.
Like being in a war zone, yeah.
It's horrible working this all lot, it's really tough.
Yeah, okay. Uh, any other questions? Is there anyone in the Q and A that might want to discuss, uh, heavy storm equipment?
Dump trucks.
Q and A session has started.
If you'd like to make a comment about the heavy equipment contract, please hit star six to participate.
I thought Sean-
Hearing none?
I thought Sean Harris might call it.
I know, Sean, we need to. Uh, I will close Q and A, any other questions from the board?
Q and A session is over.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract to supply selected pieces of heavy equipment to G-lopes of Taunton, Massachusetts.
Second.
Uh, I'm sorry, it's moved by Ms. Curran, and second by Ms. Connolly, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Eyes have it, five zero, uh, for the heavy storm equipment contract. And the last is?
The last contract is for an asphalt hand crew. Um, we put this out, um, every, you know, every year, to three years, depending if you're going to the contract. Um, it's basically for a three-man crew, with equipment, um, rollers and everything else, to follow the patchwork. If there is patchwork, the DPW crews can't do it, or it might be a water leak, or, uh, it takes up, you know, just patch repairs in different areas.
So they backfill your backfill?
Well, they might cover us if our guys are saying, picking kayaks up on the beach or something like that, you can, instead of paying, we can, we can then back up with them.
Uh, is the Board of any questions about this contract? I was just a little concerned, is this, I mean, there's no other bids, so how do we, how do we know it's a good price?
Well, uh, the price did go up by, I believe, almost a thousand dollars, I'm, I'm not thrilled with the price, they sent it out to six different contractors and advertised for it. So, um, we can also look at the state bid list, and kind of watch on that, and see if there are asphalt crews that we can use, but, um, this could be the only one that we have that did on it, technically, uh, that's how we typically sell the contract.
Would this contract limit us to calling in somebody else?
No, if somebody else came around, we could call somebody else. Um, so if there's any asphalt contractors watching, then if you want to come and work, do some work for us, we'll gladly listen to you and get you lined up.
Ms. Connolly?
It just seems awfully expensive, a three-man crew for almost $5,000 a day?
That's all their equipment also, they have trucks, trailers, um, roller.
Oh, all right.
It's not just three guys.
It's not just, yeah, I'm just imagining these three guys out there.
No, they got a roller-
I'm gonna run that company.
They got a roller, they got a, they got a dump truck-
Oh, all right.
They got a trailer, and a dump truck, and everything else, it's not just three guys.
Well, because when it said tools, that seemed to suggest, but it says equipment too. Okay, thank you.
It is expensive, and I'm gonna hold my up on it as much as possible using it, um, but you know, sometimes we just gotta get out there and fix the roadway.
Right, right.
It's in bad shape, so it's a backup, if you can't do it for some other reason.
Any other comments by the board? Open up for Q and A to discuss asphalt hand crew services?
Q and A session has started.
If you'd like to discuss asphalt hand crew services, please press star six. Anyone waiting? All right, we'll close Q and A, do I have a motion?
Q and A session is over.
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract to provide a minimum three-man crew and all applicable equipment and tools to provide asphalt hand crew services to hub construction of Hull, Massachusetts for $4,850 per day.
Moved by Mr. Goodrich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Connolly, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Eyes have it, five zero. Thank you, Kevin, I think that concludes our contract discussion for the evening. Uh, next item on our agenda is 8:10, discussion of a contract for fiber optic network. Is Mike in the hallway?
He's gonna be online.
Oh, Mike, are you online?
Hi.
Hi, Mike. Um, hold on, I gotta find the right thing here. Uh, you want to tell us, I assume this is the, from the backup, this is the last piece of the, um, fiber optic installation for the building connectivity?
Okay, to date, we have approved the actual fiber optic network, the fiber itself. This here is the equipment that brings, that connects all the fiber together, and actually sends the data over the wire.
Okay, does the Board have any questions for Mike about this? Um, how long does it ta, okay, Tony?
I just didn't know how many bids we got? Is that in here?
Mike, do we know how many-
This was purchased off the ICP 50C business, uh, I did, despite, uh, not having to, I did go out to two other vendors for a total of three to get different pricing, um, we looked at different manufacturers of different equipment, we looked at different configurations, uh, this was not really the cheapest, um, but it included, included less equipment, um, uh, to what we were getting.
Okay. How long does this process, the installation take before it's operational?
Um, I'm taking it's a people, three weeks, once we get the equipment, once the equipment arrives.
Uh, any other questions from the board? Okay, anything else you want to add, Mike, or gonna go to question and answer otherwise?
And, uh, this is, uh, this is being funded from the state grant, so, uh, that should, for the most part, um, you know, the grant, there'll be a little fund, some, some, uh, small amount of funds left over, um, but for the most part, it'll be expended.
I'm sorry, so you just said this is part of the state grant funding, for the most part?
Yes.
Okay. Um, anyone, anyone waiting to discuss fiber optic installation? Open to Q and A?
Q and A session has started.
If you'd like to chime in about the fiber optic network, network contract, you can hit star six. All right, don't see anybody, we'll close Q and A.
Q and A session is over.
Um, and anyone would like to make a motion?
Move to award a contract to Ayat Technology Solutions for the purchase and installation of networking equipment in an amount not to exceed $73,106.81.
Moved by Ms. Connolly, is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Curran? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, five zero. Thank you, Mike, for that work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. All right, moving along to our 8:20, um, discuss vote, ratification of the restaurant extension of premises at the River Club, uh, Mr. Bedrow will, will fill us in on that.
This is in your packet, uh, the River Club is not so much a restaurant as it is a function facility, they're gonna put a tent outside, they can have up to 100 in the tent outside. Uh, it does mirror the hours of Friday and Saturday, five to nine, I believe, so it's actually five to 10:00, uh, then Sunday from three to nine. Uh, no other hours out there, and, uh, no bands, no entertainment, none of that's allowed, so.
Okay. That was my question, I thought in their application, they had checked outdoor entertainment?
They're not allowed to have bands at the weddings, and all, sorry, they can't have dance laws, so.
Right.
They can have a band, no dance laws, no-
Are they requesting an outdoor entertainment permit?
Is that, is that in there?
You approved the outdoor entertainment permit, was it? For a DJ only, no band.
DJ only, okay.
And they notified the, the butters.
And it's, I mean, it's what they do anyways, usually have concerts up there, so this is actually a lot smaller than what they normally do.
Yeah, but they usually have them inside.
But they have people out on the decks, it's, it took pretty lot out there.
Great, good. When are they opening?
I believe they've already had one.
They had their first one last week, I believe, I'm gonna show you.
Ms. Connolly?
Yeah, so they're not opening as a restaurant?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But they have a liquor license.
Yeah.
Well, can they, so that's confusing to me, can they serve liquor without food?
No.
They have a phone too.
No, you can't. So these are dysfunctions, weddings, parties, things like that.
Oh, okay, so it's, it's your family comes in and they order the catering.
So you can't just go up to have a DJ, and everybody sit down and drink, that has to be fooled with the booze.
Okay. Any other questions about, Connie?
Just, uh, I'm sure they're aware of the guy, 100 people under a tent seems like a lot more, when you can only put eight people in a room.
As long as you can meet the separation guidelines, yes.
So they're aware of that.
And who's met with them, and gone over all the guidelines with them, so.
And it's mostly weddings, I assume?
Maybe a graduation party, but I think most of those have gone by at this point.
All right. Good, any other questions? Is the, the owner obviously, sorry, he has permission. Um, we're asked to, we gave, uh, to reminder, we, um, the Board authorized, Jim, to, um, extend permits, uh, permits, permits to existing businesses, given certain parameters, and the requirement is that we, he brings them back and we ratify them, so that people can move more, in a more timely fashion, since we usually typically meet every two weeks, so, that's what we are asked to do here. Uh, is there anyone on the line that would like to comment? Open to Q and A.
Q and A session has started.
If anyone would like to talk about the River Club, please press star six for your comments. No one's on the line, we will close Q and A, um, would someone like to-
Q and A session is over.
Make a motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen ratify the temporary licenses issued by the town administrator to the River Club to serve liquor under a temporary extension of premises and outdoor seating license in accordance with COVID-19 Order Number 35, and consistent with the process of approving such requests established by the Board of Selectmen.
Moved by Ms. Connolly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. Um, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, five zero. Good luck, River Club, hope you do well, that's good to know.
Yeah, it's nice.
Um, the next item on our agenda is a discussion of the Town of Situate Memorial Program. Our own Lorraine Devine has been, um, how many years? Has been supervising this program whereby-
Six years.
Yeah, for six years, supervising this program whereby you could, um, purchase a bench, or a flagpole, or other things that, um, could memorialize your loved one, and she has brought it to the Board's attention, that we're running out of things by which to offer residents. Um, so I'll let you, she has a proposal that the Board is, has before you, in your hand out, there's a revision.
Oh.
Lorraine, you want to run through this?
Sure, thank you, Lorraine. So Al Baker, uh, created this proposal in 2014, that was approved by the Board of Selectmen. I put a revised recommendation in your packet, too, after we get it out, Karen, and we have it, updating very quick. There's two pages, the second page lists, uh, the items and locations available for memorials as of May 2014. I ran it by the grand, wonderful Wizard of Oz, Nancy Holt. And brainstormed, you know, what can we do with this, and we came up, Nancy suggested, uh, getting a committee together, because it can't be one person deciding where we're gonna go with the memorial program, and it's really community-based, every community is different. In Marshfield, they just send a letter to the Selectmen of what they want to do with the resident, and they do this onesie-twosie thing, instead of like a planned layout of what it would look like. Um, so I'm just gonna take you through, I do also have a plan itemized of where we have these memorials today, I just didn't have time to put it together before this meeting, but I will get you that before. If we look at the Town of Situate, the items, locations, and costs, the costs were from six years ago, things have gone up significantly since then, so we need to reassess the cost of these things. We had the town square plaque and plaque, I don't think anybody ever bought it, flagpoles and plaques, costs have gone up significantly, the tiny machinery came, I think, $30,000 for that flagpole and plaque, out at the athletic fields, as an example. The granite benches have, have gone up, and many of these places are completely full, The granite benches have gone up, and many of these places are completely full, we have no space for granite benches. Woody Cast iron benches, these locations, we really don't have space either. Widows Walk is completely full. We can use bike racks in some different areas, but I think we need to let people know what those areas are, and where we're being, what it would look like. A tree, tree engraved with a tag would be excellent. And memorial works are a lot of work, for a little bit of money, honestly. And we really don't have places where we can put them. So my recommendation is to put together some type of memorial committee, short term, three to six months, not a lingering committee that's going to go on and on. To look at the scope of this, review the current Town of Situate memorial program, develop a plan for the Town of Situate for offering memorial programs to include locations, fees, and pricing, suppliers, procedures, ongoing inventory management, maintenance program, which is key, because we always depend on the DPW, and we have a lot to maintain. So we need to figure that out. Approvals and recommendations for the ongoing management of the whole program, and who's going to be responsible to do that. We will get an inventory of the current memorials in Situate, I have that completed since 2014. I don't have anything previous to that. And what would come out of this is a recommended future memorial plan for the Town of Situate, including naming policies for facilities. If you choose to move forward, we could say we don't want to do this anymore, we're done. I mean, this is, this is an option. The committee could include one member from beautification. We will think of them for trees and plantings and gardens and things like that, in memory of somebody. The conservation commission, they're going to be doing a major project at Dirkway Park soon. So there may be some opportunities for, you know, picnic teams and benches and things like that at Dirkway Park or Conservation Park. The beach commission wants to do a lot of things at the beaches, possibly restrooms, or showers, or, you know, bike racks, or different kinds of things that they may be considering. The recreation commission, maybe for fields, or a whole host of things that could be done with the recreation commission. DPW, public grounds or engineering would have to be involved, you know, I don't see them having to sit there every day, but on a consulting basis, because I know they have limited resources. Situate Public Schools called me and asked me if they could join, if they could get in on our memorial program, because they have their own memorials for students at all of their schools and facilities, that they are having problems maintaining as well. So Kim Peters called me about this and is interested in participating as well. And a Board of Selectmen liaison, and our representative for the Board of Selectmen. And I also think there's opportunities for some of these other areas. Council on Aging, Facilities, Library Trustees, the Town Planner. The Veteran Services Advisory Council may want to do something in honor of veterans on their own, and we manage that. And Widows Walk, maybe with the potential of a new facility, may be some memorial opportunities there as well. So I was just brainstorming this, wanted to bring it to your attention, think about it, see what you'd like to add or take out, or, it doesn't have to be a decision tonight. But I think, you know, people are calling, it's a busy, this is the busy time of year where we do a lot of, especially after we do a project like Cole Parkway that people love. You know, I want a bench, I want a bench, I want a bench, everybody wants a bench now. So we need to figure out what we want to do. Do you want to expand it and move forward with it and change it, or no? You know, whatever you'd like to do.
Thank you, thank you for doing this for so many years and for bringing this to our attention. I think there's a lot of opportunity here, it's a lot to digest.
It's a lot to digest and think about.
Quick question is, roughly, how many a year do you think our memorials are, are completed?
You know.
Any idea?
It's more when we do, we do a project, we put in 11 benches at Cole Parkway, so, you know, that was a lot. Probably last year with those, it was probably about 15 to 20. This year, I probably have about six or seven in progress. You know, anywhere from, and I can't even meet everybody's demand, but I have, I have, I've had to turn away people for now that I've kept their name in. So, when I do a project, it's more typically, otherwise I'd say five a year. Which doesn't seem like, sound like a lot, but it's a lot of work.
Like to open up to the board, any comments on the? We just got this, so we're going to need to think about it for sure.
Which is totally fine, I just wanted to give you something to think about.
I have some questions. So, is your goal to really identify the resources, if you will, of which could be used for naming and memorialize it, you know, by, or if there were?
My goal is to produce something like this document that we have before. These are the memorial opportunities in the Town of Situate.
Right.
And to update the costs and the fees, and the options that people have, if we choose to move forward with the memorial program. This is outdated, archaic, and these locations are full. And the pricing is not.
So you're really just looking for locations and pricing?
Locations, pricing, and now that the school wants to jump on board, some of these other departments want to jump on board, it's a lot more to manage, so we'll have to figure out how we're going to manage all that as a community. I mean, it would be difficult for Town Hall to manage what the school agrees to, and the school committee agrees to.
Right.
On school property, but. They may want to, you know, they may not want to offer things on school property, they might, we might want to do something jointly to say, you can memorialize this individual, this teacher who retired with a tree at this location. And the Town Planner does, should be planning the town, and where the trees, where we want to put trees eventually.
Mr. Venani?
Yeah, I, I mean, I like the idea, I like the concept. The only thought I had was, in creating a committee of all these groups, I think what we're looking for is the actual group itself to come up with ideas. I don't know that one, one person from beautification with one person of conservation are going, is going to spark the idea, but we should go to all these committees themselves and say, beautification, you 10 people, figure out what you think should do, and then, then bring that to.
And then one person would be on this main group?
Yeah, or they come, or they get a list together and the board looks at it, or. Yeah, I mean, I think I would, like, we're talking about uses of buildings too, I think I would push it out to, to the groups in their totality and say, conservation, you guys discuss it and, and come up with ideas, and maybe then it does evolve into one person. But we should put it out to all the boards in the town, in the school, and see.
Yeah, I, I like the idea, I think it's a matter of being able to apply similar standards across the whole, all the groups in town, so that, for example, if conservation is giving people the opportunity to put a bench or a marker or something, you know, on one of the paths, or they, they'd like to give people the opportunity to name a bridge, if we had a master list of opportunities that we would publicize and people would know, you know, if, if I would like to honor my father, and he loved the forest, call Town Hall, and we've got a list of all these different opportunities and you could choose. So I, I think, you know, we were talking the other night at our meeting about, you know, a person who was very active in Situate and sports and everything, and what can we do to honor her? So I think that if we had a, a well-publicized program, that we could, and get input from all the different groups, and apply the same standards so that things aren't costing $10,000 out in the forest and nothing, and. And I think we also need some policies about how long does your naming opportunity last? Or what happens when the tree that was named after you dies? Is there another tree, we went through that with North Situate? What happens when people raise money and for bricks to go in the playground at the high school, and then that playground is demolished and the bricks never made it over to North Situate? So I think we need a, a look at all of these things, just so, you know, it's clear for people. So I, I think it's a good idea.
If I can just add one more thing, I think we also have to come up with some sort of leadership in terms of, do we want to tag on everything in town? Because that's what I'm hearing feedback from neighbors, that, you know, that there's a ton of benches everywhere, and, and they're looking like this, or looking like that. We've got to, we've got to kind of keep it in, in projects and areas that we really want, so that it doesn't, doesn't come, like Lorraine said, I don't know when you shut off the benches, you know, maybe a year ago, just because it became excessive. So it loses its.
So I think what I'm hearing is that we all like the idea of coming up with a unified plan. I think Mr. Venani is absolutely right, there's a lot already out there. So we know the, the library has a naming policy, they have a list of things you can name, that should be on this as an opportunity for something. Council on Aging is going to put together the same thing. I think a one-stop shopping, so that, you know, Lorraine gets a call, and, you know, Mrs. Smith's family would like to honor, then we can pull it all together. I think we need a little time to think about just the mechanisms of doing that, so that it's, you know, doing all of that, if we just dumped it on Lorraine's desk, is too much. So maybe we figure out a plan to solicit information from existing stuff, or plans, and then figure out the next step, which is who's going to digest that into something that's comprehensive. And I think Lorraine's absolutely right, that, you know, planning should have that conversation, because, you know, I, I'm just familiar with the library, but, you know, library, there is a family that wants to put together a reflecting garden, and it's going to have a lot of landscaping that is, right now, a phase three CPC application. Maybe they'd be interested in including plantings there as part of that. So I think there's a lot of stuff in the works now that we need to just pull together.
And who's going to maintain those gardens?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. To Karen's point too, we need to have that whole plan fleshed out, yeah.
Yeah, and I sort of, just listening to all of you, I think it makes sense to bring in those resources from these commissions, like you said, that they have, and then maybe it's Lorraine, a DPW, a planning, it's a town staff committee that then identifies, all right, what is needed to maintain it, what are the requirements, so that we can go back out there, because that's really where the difficulty gets, right?
Right.
Is what's the maintenance and what's the follow-through after it initially goes there? And that burden is always placed on town resources, so.
This body needs to discuss, I think, do we want to have consolidated areas, appropriate areas, or, you know, if we get the whole scope, then we can see if it's crazy enough.
I mean, and some towns don't offer it at all, so it's not like it's something you have to continue either.
Right. Okay. So I would suggest that we do a little more homework, I'd be happy to work with you, Lorraine, on that, and then bring it back when we digest a little bit more of this information. And obviously, if you guys think about it and have comments, just let Lorraine or me know. Makes sense? No, thanks, Lorraine, I know it's a lot of work.
In the meantime, you know, in the meantime, I'd like to propose that I just finish the trees at Cole Parkway, and then we put a moratorium on the memorials at this point, until we level somewhere.
Makes sense, okay. Well, I think we'll put that on a future agenda to, to review and vote on, but I think we need to vote on that. All right, any further comments about memorial, proposed memorial committee? Anyone in the queue would like to discuss memorial? Anyone waiting, can you see?
Q and A session has started.
If you would like to discuss the proposed memorial committee, please press star six. Hearing no one, I'll close the Q and A.
Q and A session is over.
Okay. The added agenda item for 8:40 is to discuss special town meeting date, Mr. Bedrow, and there will be a vote on the warrant as well, possibly.
I can't believe we're talking about a special town meeting.
I know, I thought that when I read it last night.
But the state and federal elections in the fall, particularly with the early voting, kind of put us in a bind as to when we can do this and not cause the town clerks had to explode. So, if we had it in October, which is, usually we have it towards the end of October, beginning of November, the date would be October 13th, counting back from October 13th, we would have to actually open the warrant now in order to make the timelines and everything, get everything posted, and have a town meeting on October 13th. If you want to have it later than that, after the presidential election, we can do that. The issue with that is if we do receive additional funds through the state budget, once the town has set the tax rate, which we would normally do at the beginning of November, you can't raise and appropriate that money, so it doesn't become available to spend as part of our budget process. Once you set the tax rate, you cannot raise and appropriate anymore, because you've decided how much you're going to raise and appropriate, you can only spend free cash or available funds. So, the, the question would be, is the state going to have a budget done by October, are we going to have a number? I don't know how they don't have a budget done by October. I mean, that would be their fifth month of 112 budgets, when I don't think they have the same revenue they had last year, which means that they're going to make reductions in a six-month period, it gets very complicated, so. I'm throwing it out there, Nancy and I talked about it, the 13th gives us more flexibility if we want to do things, if we get money, but it, it's going to be a tight timeframe, just because we just literally finished town meeting, I'm going to go right back into it again.
Sure, I guess the question is, the tax rate is mandated by law to be set at a certain date, and who supervises that, the Department of Revenue, or?
Well, you have to set the tax rate in time to get your tax bills out, because your tax bills have to be out by a certain time, otherwise it kicks back, your interest panel is, it kicks back. So, it's kind of July, the 31st, the taxes, right, have to be out.
Yeah, so you probably, you don't want to go any further than the first week, December, setting the tax rate? Just because if anything else happens, have to make that work?
It's not backing.
Yeah.
The bill's out, they're going to be in the hands of them.
So if we, if we do the meeting on November 17th, we have a financial issue that we don't, could you repeat that again?
Well, we, we could hold off setting the tax rate, but everything would kind of be in motion at that point, so it'd be a lot of work. Kathy would be coming just off the election, so I don't think she's going to be real happy with a date that early, because the election would be a week or 10 days before that.
October 13th.
No, the election is in November.
No, I know, but you're.
October 13th is between the two elections.
Right.
She doesn't have any early voting going on, the September election's wrapped up, early voting hasn't started for November, so she has a little bit of, a little bit of downtime, I guess, for lack of putting it between two very big peaks.
So I guess what I'm asking you is the pros and cons. What are the pros of having it on October 13th, and what are the cons? And conversely, the same question for the November 17th. What's best for the town?
I think they, they almost come out the same.
Okay.
It really shifts the burden from, if we do it early and we have the numbers, we can do some things. If we get some additional school aid, we can help out the schools, we can do a bunch of things. It gives Nancy and Pam and the finance team plenty of time to do all their paperwork, have the tax rate in a timely manner, off we go. Kathy catches her in between, she's going to be crazed, I think.
Yeah.
If you have it later, it probably takes some of the pressure off Kathy, but it shifts it to the finance departments, because now they have to ramp things up quick to get all the paperwork done and get it back to us. I mean. Is 11:10 on Monday? Yes, is that the Monday?
No, I have to look, I can't remember the day, if it's on Monday or Tuesday.
Oh, it's the day after a holiday, I think.
Veterans Day?
What did you say, November what?
The Tuesday is November 11th, on Wednesday. It's going to be Tuesday, so Tuesday.
The election is, I believe.
I didn't know a week would be enough for Kathy to wrap up the election.
Is she going to have to send, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
So, for September 1st, the mail ballots, questionnaires are already going in, those are going back to the, to the town clerk. And then there's going to have, there's definitely going to be, what, another round of mail-in questionnaires that are going to go in for the presidential? So even though there's not, that's not early voting, is, is she's going to have to now do the mailing, so she'll be trying to mail out ballots hand butted on.
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking at, probably November 16th will be the Monday.
Yeah, and the November dates, we haven't cleared yet with the moderator?
Depending what we did, that just means we would leave town meeting, and the next morning we would be pounding away trying to get the tax stuff done and get that ready. It's doable, but.
Content-wise, we have our postponed minute agenda, the normal things that are on the special town meeting. I can't, I can't imagine there's that many new things that we have to prepare for, because we postponed so many items for manual.
Yeah, you would think none, but you never know. There's a higher threshold for petition articles, but, I mean, 100 signatures is not a whole lot of signatures if you really want to get something on the ballot. Another question's going to be COVID.
Right.
You know, where are we with that? Can we do it? You have to have the gym, you have to have breakout rooms to make sure if people showed up, how many people showed up, how much the distancing is.
I mean, you could get lucky in October, but you're not, you got to plan for inside for both.
Yeah, I think in November, you're inside.
November's.
Definitely, yeah.
My son's birthday is November 7th, it's always freezing, it starts then, it's over, so. So you cannot be outside in November.
Vignani, have I?
I mean, it sounds like Jim wants to go for October. I have no problem with that.
I, I'm, I do either one.
Did you speak with Ms. Gardner about this?
I talked to Kathy about the October date.
Did you have to peel her off the ceiling? Was she, was she tolerable about that?
As long as it's not very early voting, then it's just impossible.
The sixteenth, it might be better, but we haven't, you know, confirmation if the moderator is available.
When I start looking at the timeline for October, I'm probably better, start looking at a timeline for the other option. You just don't know when the information is going to come from state. I don't think people realize how much each time you have to have a special town meeting, it could be closed during the year.
So for us to have the most information, the best information, and what could be the most productive town meeting in terms of budget discussions, it'd be the November date.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
If we want to do the November date, we don't have to vote at all tonight. We can check with the moderator, make sure we have a date that works for him, do it another night. But when Nancy came to see me, she said, "If you want to do this date in October, we got to decide Tuesday night."
Well, we could vote it and change it.
It sets a lot of things in motion, Tony. I mean, I think if we're going to, if we're going to look at it and we want to do the November date, let's just decide we're going to do the November date and follow with that.
So, so Nancy, you're comfortable if we were to, I mean?
Yeah, I just have to file the recap, and we still have the town classification here, and so we can make it happen.
I mean, if we don't get input from the state on our numbers...
They would stand up with the budget that we're working on. We won't make any changes to it.
Right. But having a longer lead time gives us more flexibility in assessing.
Does the state sometime to at least come up with some sort of number for us to work off?
They've got to have that before October. The year's, you know, a third done.
I mean, there's only two weeks left in the session. They're going to have to extend their session if, because they don't even have a budget before right now. The governor filed a budget in January that's DOA. House Ways and Means hasn't done anything, because they're waiting to see if the feds give them any money. They, the Senate are debating a stimulus package now. The House package would contain money for cities and towns. The Senate package may or may not. The House is talking a trillion dollars almost for local government, and the Senate package is a trillion dollars in total. So they're kind of far apart on those things. But, um, once they decide, say, "Here you go," then, then the state will move. Again, the longer we have to wait for that, the better we'll have to make a decision with better numbers.
And we wouldn't have it any closer than two weeks after the general?
That'd be two weeks after the general.
We need at least that two weeks.
Give Kathy a couple of days off.
Yeah, well, if...
So, I mean, I guess I'd recommend the sixteenth of November, we should declare, we should declare with the moderator, and then we'll come back and give it to you. But we wanted to make sure you guys were comfortable with that before we just missed the deadline for October.
That means you're inside.
Yep.
Even in October, we're probably inside?
I think so, too.
We have to plan for it.
Just because the weather in October gets to be, you don't know if it's going to be hot, cold, rainy, sunny.
Gorgeous.
Freezing. Never know.
You can do inside. I mean, towns have done inside. And that's a lot further away. We'll...
Right.
We did it inside where we had people in two rooms, and it didn't go very well.
Well, and that said, though, you know, those things that are being post, that were postponed, we don't have an override. We don't have anything that would typically bring a huge crowd out.
Yeah, we had a big crowd for the, for the annual town meeting. I don't know if that's because it was outside, or, because there really wasn't anything on the, on the agenda that would bring people out. But we had two hundred ninety-three, I think, at, at the town meeting, which is a big turnout. But this would be a traditional Monday slash Tuesday town meeting.
Mr. Goodrich?
My overarching concern would be public safety for this anyway. And I think anytime, I agree with your concern that if it's going to have to be inside, but I, I think even late October, it's going to have to be inside. If there's more time, and if there is, who knows if there's another spike or what's going to happen if an extra four weeks can help? I don't know. I guess my gut is, if we can wait to save, you know, any chance of anyone being infected, I would... I'm sorry if it's more work, but I think it's worth it.
Any further comments from the board?
So what, what has to get done at this town meeting?
Has to get done?
What has to get done?
I don't think there's anything that has to get done.
Okay.
Yeah, because you don't always have to have a special town meeting.
Depending on what the numbers are, the budget could have to change, up or down. We have numbers that are different than what we've projected. But what has to be done right now, without those numbers, is nothing. I can say that you have to do that now.
Then I would think we would wait until November.
That's going to give us, that's going to give us, that will give us a better chance of having better numbers. Just because when you stop backing off of October, when we actually have to get the warrant, get it printed, get it done, it's not a whole lot of time for legislation.
I think Karen, you bring a good point. It's if we're concerned about indoors and timing and stuff, maybe we would postpone a couple more things to the annual that can be, keep the meeting as, as crisp and short as possible. And I think if we have till November, we have time to have those conversations.
Yeah, I wouldn't say short, but I would just say we'd only have...
Essential.
The essentials, so.
I stand correct. I sit correct.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Um, if the board has no more comments, I'll just see if anybody's waiting around online that wants to talk about the warrant.
Q and A session has started.
If you'd like to make a comment, if you'd like to make a comment about the timing on the fall special town meeting, please press pound, uh, star six. No one's there, we will close Q and A.
Q and A session is over.
Would the board like, so, we, do we need to take the vote?
We got to check the date with the moderator.
Yeah. So we will postpone a vote on this until we can confirm a date and have some time to think about just logistics. All right. Thank you, Jim. Moving on to new business, we have a discussion vote, Gary? Discussion vote of, uh, appointment of election workers. Super important this year. Do we have a list? Here we go. Every year, there's a group of dedicated volunteers who need to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen to the town clerk supplementalist, so that there are enough poll workers to assist in the fall elections. And this year, there'll be early voting and tallying issues, so it's going to be all hands on deck. Is there any question or comment from the board on this topic? Do we have a, do we need to read the list, Lorraine? I don't see...
Karen has the list.
Oh, Karen has the list.
Oh, you have it? Okay.
Do you want, shall I read it?
Um, I, we'll just see. If there's anybody that wants to discuss election poll workers?
How many are on the list?
Q and A session has started.
Anyone have comments on election poll workers? Please hit star six. I don't believe anyone's waiting, so we'll close Q and A, and I would request the clerk to make the motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint the following people to the following positions for the purpose of town elections. Machine technician, Ed, Thomas Edwards. Election volunteer inspectors, Julie Chapman, Robert Chesia, Christine Chesia, Martha Cook, Susan Frankel, Tom Grime, Kim McGill, Mary Jo McNally, Michelle Morrissey Smith, Irene Murray, Gretchen Orenberger, Priscilla Scott Pipes, Penny, Michelle Sherry, Amy Sheridan, Allison Short, Joanne McIntosh, Doug Smith, and Kathy McGowan.
Moved by Ms. Connolly. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Vignani? Further comment? Saying none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, five zero. Uh, thank you, everybody on that list, for your work. It's going to be, it's going to be some heavy lifting this year, and we really appreciate everybody volunteering. Okay. Uh, under new business, I, I, should we do new business or liaisons, Ms. Karen?
We can do liaison.
Okay. So we will move on to other business, and the first order of business on that are liaison reports. Does anyone like to liaison?
I'll start, um, if that's okay with the rest of the board, Madam Chair.
Please do, Ms. Curran.
So, uh, as you know, last, last week's retreat, we all agreed that there was an importance to develop an advisory committee for, um, Citro Diversity Equity and Inclusion with response to, um, a lot of requests from our community, as well as, I think, those of us on the board that want to take a look, ensure that we're meeting all the objectives, to make sure that, um, you know, we are in line with not being oppressive and not promoting racism or injustice and whatnot. So, um, I just have for you, I, I hand it out to you for you just to take a look at. This is, Jim and Karen had both gotten a couple of charges that are out there in the state today. I thought that this was a very simple, which I think is important, until we convene the committee. I also, I know we spoke a little bit about going out and surveying people first. I think we need to be leaders and put together the community and have that, I mean, sorry, put together the committee, and then have that group determine next steps and how we want to engage the public and whatnot. So, um, I took a stab, so just take a look at it. You don't need to comment tonight, but we can put it on the agenda maybe for the next meeting. Or if you want to send me some comments in the meantime, I can edit this to be a little bit more specific to situat, to ensure that we're including the appropriate citizenry as representatives, and as well as to make sure we have the appropriate town staff and leadership involved as well. So I think, um, if you can just take a look at that and just send me over any comments, and then we can talk about it at the next meeting as a discussion and vote. We can get it moving and start convening and soliciting help.
Thank you so much for taking the lead on this. And yeah, Lorraine, if you could make a note that we'll put this on the next agenda, that would be, that'd be great.
Yes.
Any other comments for...
I just want, I, I love the clarity of it. Remember, it's the more important something is, the more clear and, um, I, again, I, the simplicity and the clarity of it, I think, is, is critical, so, kudos.
I can't take credit. I'm a plagiarizer.
Do you have additional liaison reports, ma'am?
Um, I don't.
You do have?
I don't have any on.
Have you liaised on yet?
I, I'm, I'm starting to, but we have one for tomorrow night, so I'll, next, next meeting.
Yes, um, I, I think a number of us received, um, a request from the neighbors on Stockbridge Road that they were going to CPC to request money to complete a sidewalk down there. CPC did have a meeting with them, a pre-meeting, and then they had a, a meeting with them. And at the pre-meeting, uh, the, the chairman of the CPC explained to the group that it would be nearly impossible to, for CPC to fund a sidewalk on Stockbridge. And there's really only room for a sidewalk, and we all know that that's not going to happen. But, um, in the interest of making sure the public understood this, the applicants did come before CPC last week. They had an open public discussion about the various reasons why that was not going to work, and therefore, the applicants withdrew that application. They still have an application in for some sort of a park in, on this, in the Stockbridge Road area, so that will continue. But they do understand, and hopefully the public understands, that it's not a matter of not wanting to do it. It's literally a matter of not being able to do it. So I just thought I'd bring that to the board's attention.
Great. Any other liaisons? Um, I'll just let you know that, um, E D, I'd like to put EDC on the next agenda as well to come in. They'd like to update the board on, um, their efforts to try to support people during everything. Obviously, you're familiar with Citro Loves Local. One of the things that they may come before us with is they think they need more hands on deck, which would require us to, actually, we should probably put a, a discussion vote. They may want to expand the board, because there's just so much to do to, to try to help people. So, um, if, that should be coming next meeting, so we can discuss that.
And that will require revision to the town bylaws, just so you understand.
They're actually in the bylaws?
Yes.
So we'd have to... Really?
Which one? Sorry.
A commission formation? It's, it's actually included in the town bylaws?
Changing the number of members, just like we did for the council and agent last year.
Do we have to go to town meeting for that?
Yes.
Committee set up by town meeting, yeah. It's already established by the board now, but if you say...
Yeah, what was EDC? Was it established by the board?
I'll have to go back.
No, I said, it was established at town meeting.
I forgot that.
In the, I said that.
So they could discuss, maybe what they do is form a, a subcommittee. They would be allowed to do that, right, if they don't have voting members? Okay.
Yeah, you can do that.
All right. So they, they wanted to just update on, on things that they would recommend. Jim has talked, been talking to the library about what it would take to reopen. So the library trustees are working on that with Jim. And, uh, last is the beach commission just participated in the Citro Loves Local and put together a bag of things that they sold. So, um, the, the boards and committees have been really stepping up to try to help support our local businesses as well by putting these bags together. So, uh, you know, keep a lookout for those, because every bag you purchase, you learn something about a board and committee, but you're also directly supporting our businesses. So that's my liaison report. Um, correspondence?
I didn't see any. Most of the correspondence was somehow, yeah, incorporated into a discussion, so.
We did receive a lot of, as we noted, a lot of correspondence about the museum beach, but we covered that. Um, we are on to approval of minute, min, meeting minutes, eleven iterations. Does anyone have any comments about meeting minutes that are proposed? We have several. We were, we were a little behind because of, um, retreat and the town meeting delay. So we have one, two, three, four sets of minutes to catch up on, and just one set of executive. I have one change, though, before you make a motion.
Two sets of executive session minutes.
Yeah, I just want to note that Mr. Andrew Goodrich was the recorder of the July fourteenth, uh, when was our retreat? July seventh meeting?
The fourteenth, yes.
You recorded.
Me, the fourteenth?
I just forwarded it to you.
I'm confused. July seventh?
No, fourteenth.
July fourteenth.
July fourteenth. It's all a blur now. July fourteenth, it says, is erroneously indicates me as the recorder, but Mr. Goodrich was the recorder.
I'll draw one out so I can know you some.
Have a motion? Sorry?
I'll have to change that tonight, so we are drinking cider.
So do we want to just omit that and do it next time?
No.
Move to accept the, uh, meeting minutes for the Board of Selectmen meetings held on June twenty-third, July twenty, June twenty-seventh, July seventh, and July fourteenth.
Moved by Mr. Vignani. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Goodrich.
Let me just add with the, some other change.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, five zero.
And move to accept and not release the executive session minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on June twenty-third, twenty twenty, and July seventh, twenty twenty, since the matters discussed are still pending at this time.
Second. Moved by Mr. Vignani, second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Saying none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, five zero. That is, anyone else have anything that we have not covered that you'd like to discuss this evening? And I will entertain a motion for an adjournment to sign documents.
Some move?
Some move by Ms. Curran.
Second.
By Ms. Connolly. Any discussion? Saying none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, everyone. Good night. Be safe, wear your masks, and stay apart.